Hello, my name is Sue Smerek and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters, Washington County. Welcome to our online candidate forum for the November 6th general election. The League is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that promotes voter education and we host candidate forums to help make informed choices. Now, let's hear from the candidates.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Smerek and I will moderate the forum tonight. And now it's my honor to introduce four of the 13 candidates running for the Ann Arbor School Board: Susan Baskett, Kai S. Cortina, Jacinda Townsend Gaidus, and Jamila James. The League will conduct a total of three forums in which 12 of the 13 candidates for Ann Arbor School Board have agreed to participate. Thank you, candidates, for participating in this forum. We're now ready for your opening statement, Ms. Baskett.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Susan Baskett and I've had the honor of serving as one of your school board members for the last 19 years. I respectfully ask for your vote so that I may continue to serve you, your children, our community. Like many, I originally ran for the board because I was angry about something. The schools had not taught my son how to read. Now I'm running because I've helped make a lot of good things happen in the Ann Arbor Public Schools and there's a lot of exciting things to come. My leadership and institutional knowledge will serve to make things even better. I'm a child of a Filipino immigrant who brought us to Ann Arbor in part because of the good, strong education. My Ann Arbor Public School education led me to earn degrees from the University of Michigan and Duke University. Most importantly, it prepared me to give back to our community. While my sons have graduated, we still have grandchildren and loved ones who are now either students or educators in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. Our community deserves the best, so I welcome your question so that I may prove that I'm the best candidate for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baskett. And now, Mr. Cortina, may we have your opening statement?
I'm Kai Cortina. I am a professor of educational psychology at the University of Michigan. I would never have thought, I would never have thought that I would run for school board. The reason is, I'm very frustrated, frustrated with the current school board. The school board has, is a sad display of increasing dysfunctionality, has made a sequence of decisions that have really hurt our school district. And the science that should guide our decision-making during, during the COVID pandemic was set aside and decisions were made that I think need to be reversed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortina. And now we're ready for your opening statement, Ms. Gaidus.
Good evening and thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for having us on. My name is Jacinda Townsend Gaidus. As the daughter of a public high school teacher who went on to become one of the people who implemented the Kentucky Education Reform Act, not only have I long been invested in public education, but I've long understood that powerful change can happen when stakeholders are invested. I left Kentucky to get a BA from Harvard, then a JD from Duke, and an MFA from the University of Iowa. I've been a lawyer and a journalist. I'm now a novelist and a professor at the University of Michigan. One consistent life direction has been my commitment to public service. As a parent, I've served in my children's schools, first as a volunteer, then as a board member at my children's Montessori, and then when they aged out of Montessori and into public schools, as an elected member of the Board of Trustees of the Monroe County Community School Corporation, an Indiana district comparable in size to Ann Arbor's. If what I say tonight resonates, I hope you'll vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaidus. And finally, may we have your opening statement, Ms. James?
Hi, my name is Jamila James. I'm running for school board because I believe our schools are preparing our children for the future. Among, along with skill trade, social-emotional learning, restorative justice, teacher autonomy, I'm also a real proponent for equity. And I currently do equity work in my membership in this fire, Ann Arbor Schools, Ann Arbor School Parents Intent on Racial Equity, and I'm also a part of the Washington County Equitable Exchange Steering Committee. It is very important to me that our kids have a voice, an advocate on the board, and that's who I am. I am a child advocate. I am not afraid to speak truth to power, even if that means disagreeing with leadership. I hope that you give me a seat at the table because I'm there for you.
Thank you, Ms. James. And thank you, candidates, for your opening statements. And now to the questions. We will start with Mr. Cortina for the first question. What are your top two priorities if elected?
Top priority number one is to make sure that those children that were suffering from what we know now from the test numbers, we have a huge deficit, learning deficit, in particular elementary schools. In the school year 2021, children only learn half where that they are, that they used to learn, that they were supposed to learn. And the school district needs to implement really measures to help those kids coming back to the level where they should be, because most affected are actually children from poverty background, children from households, single-parent households. They are most affected by these learning deficits, and the school district does not do enough to compensate for that. That's my priority one. Priority two is I want to bring, take a critical look at all the technical, technology we have bought for a lot of money from the school district, but we really need to keep all the software and devices. I'm a little bit old-school. I like school, I like books from the library that are really out of, made of paper and not digital libraries. I think we do not need all that. We can come back to school life as we all know and appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cortina. Ms. Gaidus, same question to you, ma'am.
Yes, I am passionate about academic excellence and I am passionate about equity. And I think those two things work in synergy, though some of them, some people see those two as opposed things, but I do not. First, let me talk a little bit about equity. I am passionate about it. I grew up in rural Kentucky. For a long time, I was the only black kid in my school. Then I was fortunate enough to go to the biggest public high school in the state. We had rich kids, we had poor kids, we had white kids, we had black kids, we had immigrant children, you know, people who shoveled horse poop in the morning, every kind of kid. And I'm passionate about that. School integration peaked at that point. We are now back at board, Brown versus Board of Education levels. I'm interested in the way we, you know, we have a school here that has 61% black and Latino population and 46% free and reduced lunch population. And then we have another elementary school that has 8% and 11% of those numbers respectively. I'm interested in thinking about the way we implement schools of choice on the local level. My second thing, because I know I'm running out of time, my second biggest, highest priority is just to make sure that we resource and retain teachers. This has been a destination district for a long time, but we all know that, you know, nationwide, there is a teacher shortage. I think that, you know, we're lucky enough that our governor passed this historic budget. We now get $9,000 per pupil, which is amazing. We also have, and this is a number I may get wrong, but I think it's 260 million for mental health support. So we're fortunate that this is a time when that support is coming. And so I think that AAPS, in AAPS, we need to make sure as a district that we're using that money where it needs to go, and that is teachers. Not, I am not interested in hiring more administrators, you know, at my daughter's school. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gaidus. And now, Ms. James, same question to you, ma'am.
My top two priorities is equity and using the COVID money that we receive to get it to the hands of the children that need it, be it with tutoring, mental health support, all those things that are needed to uplift our children after this pandemic, or as we go through this pandemic. I think that our equity plan, the current equity we plan, we have in place for Ann Arbor Schools is optics. I want something with more teeth, something that actually says, names the problem, something that actually has someone that has accountability on it, and I want to actually do some work on that. I want to ensure that our children are getting, is getting the support that they actually need equitably. And what equitable, equitably being, means does not mean equal, it means meeting the greatest need. Those that have the greatest needs, needs the support. I also am very interested in those funds being used for special education. Those children that Kai was speaking of, that did not, that lost, that lost, um, lost education or retention, are, some of those are the kids that have 504s, the IAPs, that did not receive services during, during the COVID pandemic, during, while we were out of school, while we were online. I think it's very important that we address the fires that are in our children and take care of those right away. So my top two priorities is dealing with that equity plan and also making sure that the services, the funds that we have available right now are used towards services for our children, the children that are in the most need.
Thank you, Ms. James. And Ms. Baskett, same question to you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. So there are a lot of priorities, right? So let me, but you only asked for two. So let me take two broad categories and do the subsets. First of all, ensure that our return to our buildings continue to be safe and successful. There is a, their COVID is still alive. There is a lot of vulnerability for our students, so that's very important, is keeping, making sure that everyone stays healthy. Because as we talk about labor shortages, which is, again, under that category of returning well to, returning successfully back to our schools, we don't have enough teachers and enough substitutes. If anyone gets sick, we are vulnerable to have to, again, go virtual, and nobody wants to do that. So let's keep our, excuse me, everybody healthy and, and continue to be, so that they may continue to be in our buildings. Under, again, that sub, that category of returning to schools, we have to address the labor shortage. Before the pandemic, we had a labor shortage, and the pandemic only exacerbated it and brought it to life. The social, emotional, again, part of our goals that Dr. Swift has already laid out for this coming year is to have a social worker into every elementary school. Again, we have to look at the labor shortage, people have retired on us, so we have to see where we are with that. The DEI will work, the diversity, equity, and inclusion work will now also include accessibility. Again, that's work that's already in place and that will continue. We will have an equity plan within the, the end of the, the school, I'm sorry, the end of the school year, definitely. But we'll also have to deal with second big category, second top priority is board development. We cannot lead if we don't know how to lead. We cannot lead a quality district if we don't know our jobs. So to me, a top priority, having done this several times with new boards, is to learn from each other about what the job is and how we successfully can carry out the goals that have already been established, as well as continued new ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baskett. And Ms. Gaidus, you're the first for the next question. What should the Ann Arbor Public Schools do to address the student learning loss that occurred during COVID?
That's a really good question. And, you know, I, and apologies, because this is sort of a continuation of the last question, but I'm going to give you a little story in 30 seconds, hopefully. My kid loved math. She was assigned to Algebra 1A, took that online, and now, and now does not like math. There was no teacher teaching that. It was virtual, you know, and I don't mean because of the pandemic. I mean because that's not a class taught by a teacher live. So, again, we really need to think about retaining and resourcing teachers. I think we know this is a destination district for teachers, but we need to keep it that way. We need to make sure that, you know, health insurance is affordable for them. We need to make sure that their salaries are keeping up with the cost of living in Washington County, because that has risen a great deal. And, you know, I will say that, I know I have heard bandied about, you know, this number that we're, we're spinning 80%, and I'm not even sure that's right, 80% of our budget on staffing, but that's what we're delivering. We're delivering people to students. And so I think, again, it's like retaining those people would help a great deal with the learning loss, and having live teachers, having enough teachers, having enough staff is pretty much the only way you can do that. I know I spent a lot of time at my younger child's school this year. There was a day I was sitting there and the guy who greets the students in the morning, who's probably a para, he probably doesn't, you know, no, he doesn't get paid enough, he greeted all 600 of these kids with their own special handshake. That job is way harder and, and far more work-intensive than any director of anything that we're hiring in this district. And those are the people who, I think, are going to help us shore up that gap that happened during the pandemic.
Thank you, Ms. Gaidus. Ms. James, same question to you, ma'am.
So I think the first thing we can begin doing is making sure that we're using those COVID funds that we have to hire, make sure that we have reading specialists in all the schools. One of the things I've noticed throughout my many years as a parent with, in the schools, is that those reading specialists are shared, if few, if far between. I also think that we can make a concerted effort with reinstating after-school programs in which there's tutoring available. I know there's a lot of our community centers, as a parent, a peace center, peace neighborhood center parent, I know that they had, my kids could go after school to Peace Neighborhood, a good tutoring. Peace Neighborhood only holds so many kids. We need to make that available to everyone. I think that another thing that we could do is make, be it very intentional about teaching our children and not just for the tests. The test, testing is interesting, and we need to make sure that we are, we are able to judge where our children are going. But one thing about testing that we need to be very aware of is a snapshot at a time, and it's just a one-day thing. You don't know what was going on in that child's life, you don't know what type of day they have, you don't know if they're a good tester at all. So tests are not a good indicator of, of education loss, reading loss, or whatever. However, putting the funds that we have sitting in, in a bank somewhere to use for our children with tutoring, with after-school care, with the tutoring, getting reading specialists in there, getting more support is a priority, and that's how you handle the reading loss, how you handle the, the education loss.
Thank you, Ms. James. And now, Ms. Baskett, same question to you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. First of all, let's look at what we're really talking about. We are measuring our students, who had a horrible time, some of them, and some of them not so, but we're measuring them under conditions of how they're taught online, sometimes with family support, sometimes not, sometimes with paid pod teachers, to measure, to the levels pre-pandemic, when they were in a classroom. So is that fair? But having said that, we have seen tremendous growth since our first year back. March 20, we closed our buildings, we went online, we brought the students back for a few weeks, and in very few weeks in the spring, and then we took the summer off. Now we're looking at our students full-time, face-to-face, seeing where they are. We have programs in place to keep our children in their classroom, looking at where their needs are and addressing them. And sometimes, sometimes we are able to boost, if you will, their learning with the technical devices that some people are opposed to, to help differentiate. We have differentiated learning in this district, and due to the wonderful educators that we have, the educators are able to see where Susan is this day, where Sally needs to be the next day. And again, we differentiate the learning, the teaching to those particular students. That's how we're going to continue to do this. I oppose full-time summer, additional summer school for some kids and not other kids. Kids should have the options of having their summers. We should teach within the school year to everybody, to their needs. I totally agree that things were less than perfect, but if you look at our scores, even our weakest students are still performing better than the national norms, their colleagues at the national, their cohorts, excuse me, at the national norms. We understand the first and second graders were, were not performing as well as their, their cohorts, their colleagues, if you will, pre-pandemic. We are in the process of making, they are in the process of making great learning leaps. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baskett. And now, Mr. Cortina, same question to you, sir.
Of course, the school district should have done something over the summer. We know the learning deficit and the inefficiency of Zoom school for a long time, and we should have gone back earlier, back into in-person schooling. We know the spring data were as devastating as the fall data were from the NWEA, and the school district should have done, put all stops out to make offerings. Of course, you know, I agree with Susan Baskett, we should, you know, parents should have a choice whether or not the students should participate in some summer programs, but we could have done way more. There is no mistake, research is very clear. To make up for deficits, you need intensive tutoring. And the problem is, if it's not done, or people decide against it, the deficits automatically become bigger. They don't disappear by themselves. This need active support, because what happens is the opposite. If we don't do anything, those deficits become bigger. I do not know why anybody thinks that they would, they would not accumulate, because once I'm 50% behind in this, the curriculum the next school year comes, I have totally lost track of where we are. Intensive tutoring, how can we do this? Yes, you know, hiring, I, I think Jamila James has a good idea, having reading coaches in schools. Yep, if we have money for that. And financing teachers, you know, this is very complicated in Michigan. I don't want to go into that. That is not something you can do easily. But we have resources in Ann Arbor. We have one of the best schools of education in the United States. Well, I'm sure if you ask Elizabeth Moji, she is the dean of the School of Education, we have about 400 teachers in training. They would be willing to step up to the plate and for, for some credit, you know, to, for some, some credit for a class we can put together, to do intensive tutoring after school. I'm sure this could be, would be done. I feel there is, there was an all-hands-on-deck kind of attitude that needs to come about, and the school district, including the, the current school board and the superintendent, I feel they have not hurt this, have not hurt the community who is outraged. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortina. And now, Ms. James, you're the first for the next question. School teachers have been on the front lines during the COVID pandemic, and news media report that teachers are overwhelmed and depressed. What specific, specific steps should Ann Arbor Public Schools take to support its teachers?
So I would love to say, oh, we have to increase their pay. And although they really deserve it, we have to be realistic about the budget of what's going on. So one thing we could do is offer transparency with working with the teachers' union with our budget to talk about what can be done. Another thing we could do is giving them more PTO time. We may not be able to pay them per se with money, but we could give them more time off. We could also kind of reduce all the paperwork and all the work that they have to do unpaid after their shift. If any other, in any other career, if we were told that we still had to work after we clocked out, we would be outraged. We could also show our teachers a little bit more appreciation. As you said, they have been on the front line, as you, and they also are the commodity of the Ann Arbor Schools. I completely agree with Jacinda, that they are the product. They are the reason why we even have schools. So we need to honor that and respect that. I feel like teachers aren't respected the way they need to be. We could also do things such as, like, giving them gift cards, just letting them know that they're valued. We, giving them mental health support is a huge thing, because this is very stressful, just as our children are very stressed, and they are very stressed, because this is something totally new to them, totally different. They just went through some childhood trauma that we're going to have to heal at some point. These teachers are also going through trauma. This discussion has been brought up about how we're losing teachers. We're losing teachers because we're not taking care of teachers, and we're not honoring teachers. So I think that we need to show them the professional respect that they, they deserve. I think that we can find ways to compensate them that isn't necessarily monetarily if it's not available, but I think we also need to explore honestly, transparently, what we can do financially for our children, for our teachers, excuse me, which helps our children. So I think that is, overall, we need to show them respect.
Thank you, Ms. James. Ms. Baskett, same question to you, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Over the years, I have developed a very good working relationship with our, our bargaining units, including, including the teachers, especially the teachers. One of the first things is continue to listen to them. Our teachers know, let's say, our teachers' leadership know the straits that we're in. They know our budgets just as well as we do. They know what's legally possible as well as we do. So let's listen to their ideas. What is it that they think will help reduce the stress, therefore, the social and emotional issues? We've offered social and emotional support. We will continue to do that. But I would say, one of the most important things that we can do, especially as a board, is be the barrier between our teachers, our, our, our staff in the schools, and the hostility that is coming towards our teachers and our schools. Let's be the barrier to talk about, no, we're not going to let teacher, parents do this or do that, which, again, is not legal and not helpful, but we will support another route. Let's look at how our students have come back into the building, and some of them have been so undisciplined, so undisciplined, causing a lot of stress to our teachers. So again, let's give the teachers the support, not to suspend or expel, but to learn how to handle some of these disciplinary issues that we've seen. Let's put the good news out to counter the press, the negative press that's been coming at our teachers. Let's look at, be very clear what we will support. I personally will not support any parents coming in to ban our books or to tell us what we need to do when, one, it may not be allowed, and two, it may not be best for our children. Yes, let me be very clear. Parents do have a say into the curriculum and their students' educations. It's how they do it. Let's work together with the teachers. My sons have been very successful in Ann Arbor Public Schools because we and our family have truly developed a partnership. The student, the teacher, the parents, whoever the caregivers are at home, and that will help our teachers be more successful and reduce the stress that they are encumbering right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baskett. Mr. Cortina, same question to you, sir.
My first impression that I get when I talk to a lot of teachers on the street, that I, when I canvassing, I get the impression many teachers feel that the, the school board and the superintendent is out of touch with reality. A lot of teachers are frustrated. Why? Because they feel they are not heard. They have no voice. They were not heard when we were in the COVID crisis, what they would like to, they were forced to a hybrid model, teaching hybrid that they hated with a passion as much as many, many students. And they were not really asked whether they liked this. While in school districts next to us, Celine and Dexter, they were long back into regular schooling with masks, and this was all in, in line with public health guidelines. So the frustration has to do with the past, so not, it doesn't help that we dwell on the past. I agree with that. So what is it, what I think, what needs to be done? The trust has to be rebuilt, because different from Susan Baskett, I do not see there is a lot of trust. I think this needs to be rebuilt, and not necessarily only indirectly through the union, because people are also frustrated with the teachers' union. I think it's time to go back to the schools and talk to the teachers directly, and what the teachers want. I know, I hear, what I hear on the street is teachers want more professional development, and that is not rushed, but it's planned, long-term planned. The, the teachers want to have some security how their career progresses over, over time. We are a privileged school district. We all know that. This is not just only pay. We have great equipment, and we have, you know, all the, the, the extra things we have through our sinking funds. So I think the teachers need to be a little bit more at the table, and not just through the union. And I think this is a mistake. I think with the school district should, should open that up and should find avenues to talk to the teachers directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortina. And Ms. Gaidus, same question to you, ma'am.
Sure. So when I was on the school board in Indiana, I was one of two board members who consistently voted to honor the wishes of teachers. I never saw myself as a board member who needed to rubber stamp what the superintendent wanted to do. I, I often fought for teachers over administration. I I often fought for teachers over administration, and I will continue to do that. It's something that's really important to me as the daughter of a teacher. And, you know, as the daughter of a teacher, I understand how, just how hard they work. And I'm also an educator myself now. I understand how under-resourced they are, how underpaid they are. You know, one thing that happened during the pandemic in Indiana is the superintendent, our superintendent decided that he would incentivize vaccination by giving away a car. Immediately, I got, I don't know how many texts, asking me to do the calculations on how much a new car costs and how much divided that would be if given to each teacher in the district. And it was no insignificant amount of money. You know, teachers don't want a pizza party. What they want are more resources. I'm one of two school board candidates who gathered signatures rather than paying the filing fee. And one of the reasons I wanted to do that is that I wanted to actually talk to people as I was gaining the signatures. I talked to a lot of teachers. I found out that resources for them even are under allocated excuse me, inequitably allocated according to school. You know, we have students at Pathways who have old, old Chromebooks. We have students at other schools who have brand new ones. That affects the teachers, obviously. We need professional development that teachers actually want here. We've had a number of P Ds that are ineffective, that people have not wanted to attend, that people have actually not attended. We have a top-heavy, you know, administrative layer here. And we need to think about, as a board member, I would question those hires. I would question whether we need those hires. And and again, you know, we, we've seen some, we, I know I'm running out of time. We just, we just need to think about what we can do now that we have a lot of budget free to help teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Gaidus. Ms. Basket, you are the first for the next question. The Board of Education's twenty twenty-one Student Enrollment Report indicates that the number of students in Ann Arbor Public Schools has declined in each of the last three years. In the past two years, the most significant single reason for the decrease was transfer to private schools, per the report. Does this pattern indicate a need for changes in Ann Arbor Public Schools?
I don't think so. But let's, let's kind of break that down. First of all, we, as a district, have, over the last ten years, have, we have continued to enroll students at an incredible pace. The pandemic era was an exception. And understandably, I fully believe in parents having the choice to take their students wherever. As I tell students, parents, your child is this particular age this time once in his or her life. And so if you don't think the Ann Arbor Public Schools can offer the best education for your child, I welcome you and I will help you make that transfer. Because it's important to me that your child be successful. Now, having said that, we were fine with the the parents, again, moving their children elsewhere because for pandemic reasons, we needed fewer students in our schools. Now, what we are finding, though, our parents are coming back. The grass was not necessarily greener on the other side. Parents leave, who leave for private schools, leave for different reasons. We will never compete regarding religious grounds. That's fine. But when you, what we often see, and historically I've seen this, we get the students later, if not at the middle school, we see them at high school. No one in this area can compete with our high school offerings. We have awesome high school offerings. We have, we are the first in the nation to have four, all four components of the International Beth Laureate Program, for example. So we will continue to move forward. We will continue to attract students. Again, we may lose some. We're fully expect, but we will also gain some. We are not afraid to deal with potential changes that we may have to make. But at this time, you ask if we think you need to change changes? No, I think we need to stay the course. We need to move forward. What we will do this fall, one of the top priorities we have chosen as as a district, is to hear parents, to hear those stories. And I welcome the feedback so that we can implement them in our next year's offerings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basket. And Mr. Cortina, same question to you, sir.
The reason is very simple. It was the really weak policy during the COVID pandemic where we had, my daughter went to Tap and Middle School. The school was closed. My daughter was in the basement where I'm right now on Zoom School, across the street, San Francis. The kids were frolicking in masks during recess. Nobody understands, understood that. And a lot of parents who were like myself, who believe in public education, were really wondering, you know, whether or not we should, for example, you know, enroll our kids in in Celine schools. Because we were not trusting that we would come back to the, from the Health Department and CDC clearly declared we can go back and safely into schools. And Ann Arbor, in its infinite wisdom, decided to second guess pub- public health officials. This has frustrated a lot of parents, and this is what you will get if you do what I also strongly suggest to do. You know, learn and listen to, and really listen to the parents. I'm I'm glad that Susan Biscuit suggested, because I completely agree. We have to regain the trust of the parents in the, in the quality of our school system. The data don't look good, and I do not see without really massive intervention that we, that we come back to the, to the the level where we used to be.
Thank you, Mr. Cortina. Ms. Gaidus, same question to you, ma'am.
Yes, and I am for once not going to use all my time. Because what I want to say is that I believe that that is a temporary dip that that is owing to the pandemic. We're a school district. We're not like the Ottoman Empire. I don't think we need to worry about temporary dips in terms of numbers. And I also want to say, you know, I I think that I I agree with a lot of what has been said, but I also think that we have a lot to offer that is unique. And we have a lot to offer that sort of is, you know, in my opinion, public schools, if you believe in public schools, well, then you're going to send your kids to public schools. You know what I mean? So I don't, I don't see that as a big problem. And I know, I think two of the high schools have the biggest freshman classes they've ever had. So it also may be a demographic issue.
Thank you, Ms. Gaidus. Ms. James, same question to you, ma'am.
Could you please repeat the question?
Yes. The Board of Education's twenty twenty-one Student Enrollment Report indicates that the number of students in the Ann Arbor Public Schools has declined in each of the last three years. In the past two years, the most significant single reason for the decrease was transfer to private schools, per the report. Does this pattern indicate a need for changes in the Ann Arbor Public Schools?
No.
Okay.
I agree that it was a temporary dip. Ann Arbor schools will always be schools that are, how do you say this? There are always going to be schools that people wanted to go to. Ann Arbor has awesome schools. We have our issues, but overall, you get an awesome education here in Ann Arbor schools. I agree that the dip was, is temporary. A lot of it is because of the pandemic. But there's nothing to worry about. There are a lot of changes we have to do within our schools, specifically about our equity in all areas of our schooling. However, I don't believe that that's the reason for the dip, and that has nothing to do with the dip per se. Or maybe that's wrong to say that. But no, I don't think that we need to make any changes. How's that? Except for equity.
Thank you, Ms. James. And then I believe this is our last question. So then, Mr. Cortina, you will start off. What is our last question? Currently, COVID masking is optional and welcome across the district. What is your position on masking at the Ann Arbor Public Schools?
You will not be surprised. I follow the science, and I want the school district to constantly follow the science about this. Yes, depending now, currently we are on high level and it's strongly encouraged, and I think this is what the school district should do. I am not a big fan of mandatory masking, because how should the school district enforce that? This one, we have, has to be realistic. Aside from the issue whether this is is a good thing to do to or not. I feel as long as we stay in line with the recommendation of the Washington Health Department, because we can't convince students to have different practice in in when they go to school, then they go to do the mall. Nobody understands that, that we should have in all, you know, public or, yeah, public buildings or that are publicly accessible. We should have the same policy. It makes no sense to make this different for schools. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Cortina. Ms. Gaidus, same question to you, ma'am.
Sure. And again, I'll be brief. I am extremely pro masking. I think if we want our students to stay in school, we need to take every safety precaution necessary to keep them there.
Thank you, Ms. Gaidus. Ms. James, same question for you.
Please repeat the question again.
Yes. Currently, currently, COVID masking is optional and welcome across the district. What is your position on masking at the Ann Arbor Public Schools?
I support masking, especially at high transmission.
Thank you, Ms. James. Ms. Basket, same question to you, ma'am.
This is a tough one. This was not a unanimous vote, so to speak, and and we did not vote on this. But a consensus amongst the school board members. We we did have differing opinions. But we do have a guideline in place. And as my tenth grade teacher, Andy Malama, once said, you don't set set a policy that you can't enforce. And to try to, again, enforce that for everybody was just going to be too cumbersome, if you will, to continue. However, having said that, we have to be safe. So while we are following the guidelines that's set, we have a caveat where we will look at our own data. What's in our particular buildings at our particular time? So at any particular time, if it looks like we're getting too many cases, so to speak, then we will reinstitute wearing masks. And we've already done that this year, believe it or not. And everyone has been very supportive and compliant. I believe everybody, whether your student, support staff, bus driver, teacher, you want to be back in our buildings. And so we have to do so safely. Yes, we welcome masks. I personally do continue to wear the mask. But I also acknowledge that other people may not be comfortable in doing so. But I think both of us, other side of where, no matter which side you're on, you want to have the safe, best environment for our students in our buildings. So I encourage folks to look at our guidelines that are on our website. It's very, well, it should be very clear if not asked. We will continue to monitor the situation on a weekly basis. And again, we ask that everybody complies. And I don't think it's going to be a problem. It hasn't been a problem so far. And if we all work together, we will continue to keep our buildings open, our children being taught safely in our schools. And we should have a successful school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basket, and thank you, candidates, for those questions. And now we move into the closing statements. And now it's time for the closing statement, which we will begin with Ms. Basket.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for continuing to host this valuable educational resource for our community. The voters will have four votes in this school board race, and I hope tonight's forum have convinced you that I have earned one of those four. Some of my accomplishments that we have not talked about tonight was that I fought and won the fight to ban guns from our school properties, and that enabled all Michigan schools to do so, again, to keep our students safe. I also was part of approving the Ann Arbor Youth Gender and Sexuality Alliance, which is a designated association of the school board to support our LGBTQ A students and their community. I also enhanced or voted to enhance the the quality of air comfort by, and providing sustainable learning environments via the communities approved one billion dollar bond. And I will continue to serve on that particular committee using the knowledge that I gained from the last campaign in building a skyline to make sure that we provide the best for our students. For those who don't know, we are building a new building for Mitchell and Pathways Academic to Sussex Campus. And that's very important to me. And I ask that the voters return me so to the board so that, again, I can use my leadership and my institutional knowledge to make that a seamless effort. So if, please visit my website, basketforschoolboard.com to address any questions. Please give me the opportunity to address your questions personally that may not have been asked here, that may not have convinced you that I'm the best candidate for your school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basket. And now, Mr. Cortina, may we have your closing statement?
I also thank the Women's League for this opportunity because, but I really like the fact that we are only four people at a time. We were in other four, where everybody is there, and that is really difficult. I feel we had more time to really get a little deeper into those questions. My starting point, my point of entry is and remains my concern about the state of arts in Ann Arbor Public Schools. As is often said, yes, we are a very strong school district. We used to be the school district where people look towards to for innovation and best practices, and I think we lost that. In my assessment, the superintendent and the and the school board have lost touch with the parents, students, and teachers a little bit, maybe a little more than a little bit, because what I hear is is a lot of dissatisfaction. We get every week an email from the superintendent. The superintendent is constant happy talk, how wonderful everything is. But people down, down on the street and in the in the schools know it's not. I want, would like to see more transparency, more honesty. And that is the first step to actually really take, take, you know, measures to improve the situation. Because I, as an educational scientist, I think we downplay the problems we have created through this one, almost one year of not optimal schooling. And we need to really get all hands on deck to to do something about this and have to become a bit more creative. Because, you know, we we are, we used to be a school, would school district, but there are others around us that actually I feel are stronger currently than we are.
Thank you, Mr. Cortina. Ms. Gaidus, may we have your closing statement, ma'am?
Surely. Thank you so much for hosting this. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for helping educate the voting public. This has all been really wonderful. So there are a lot of sort of obvious identities I have. I'm black. I'm a woman. If you hear my accent, you know, I'm a hillbilly, pretty proud of it. One thing that's not obvious is I'm a single parent. And I'm glad there are actually four single parents running, and I'm so glad because that's the voice we need on the school board. I am also an artist. I think I'm the only person run, running who is a working artist. And, you know, one thing I've always wished is that more artists ran for public office. Because we, as a matter of our employment, have to step outside of our skins, step into other people's skins, step back in and transmit that to the world. It's what I do as a leader. I listen to people. I have done that all while I've been campaigning. I've been gathering input from people because I want to represent the community and not impose some agenda from on high. I also want to say, I follow Kimberly Garcia on Twitter, and she is the mother of Amory Garcia, who was killed in in Uvalde. And on August twenty-fifth, she had this one simple tweet. She said, I hope the school board does the right thing. They did, fortunately. But I want to say, as a former school board member, I heard that a lot. I would see that. I would get texts. And we can't, there, you cannot overestimate how important this job is. As a former board member, I helped disarm the S R Os in our school district. Okay, thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Ms. Gaidus. And now, Ms. James, may we have your closing statement, ma'am?
Yes. So I also would like to thank you guys for providing a space for us to have this conversation and asking your questions. It's very important that we hear the questions that others are having and not just live in our own bubble. So in closing, I would like to say that I'm a person that you need on the school board. I have no problem with speaking truth to power. I'm someone that is an advocate for our children, first and foremost. I have no problem with being that person that's sticking to their guns to best protect our children. I kind of lost my train of thought, but here's the thing. Our children are in trouble. We're not preparing them to be adults. We're not preparing them for the world that we have before us. We're all concerned about all these other things that are quite as important as making sure that our children are fully developed, be it with social, emotional learning, restorative justice, mental health support. These are the things that helps our children, that will help our children be the adults that they need and to keep them safe. I'm also speak the voice for people that are unheard. Everyone doesn't want to go to college. Skill trade is a real thing. I just feel jumbled. So I'll just say this. We have an opportunity here to do really great things for our children and for our community. But we need people on the board that's willing to do the work. We need people on the work, on the board that's willing to let go of their ego and take care of things. I'm that person.
We thank the candidates and volunteers who participated in this forum and community members who contributed questions. Please urge others to view our forums. Most important, be sure to vote in the November eighth general election, either by absentee ballot or in person. Thank you and good night.